Good evening councillors and members of the public.
Good evening.
Thank you. How nice. I decided not to dance up to the podium today. I didn't want to go down in history as the dancing queen of JPC. Before we go any further, the fire regulations are on the screens above us. Please ensure that mobile phones are switched to silent and the usual notes about making sure your cards are pushed in etc. Right, so before we move to the main items of business, just to introduce the officers, on my left we have Lewis Jones, our lawyer, next to him is Ruth Dovey, the principal planning officer, Louise Yandel, area team leader, and Elizabeth Sims, the boss. So first item this evening are the minutes of the last meeting, they've been on the table for the last 30 minutes, are you happy for me to sign them as a true record?
Really.
Councillor Gray, you're looking a bit sheepish.
Would you not move the table then?
Right Fiona, any apologies for absence or declarations of subs?
Thank you Chairman, we've had apologies from councillors Mike Band, Mary Foragevsky, Michael Goodridge, David Hunter and Stephen Mulliner, and councillor Patricia Ellis is attending as a substitute tonight.
Thank you, any declarations of interests?
None Chairman.
Any questions by members of the public?
None Chairman.
Any from members?
None.
Jolly good. It says here to ask Beth to introduce performance against government targets, but I think Louise is going to take that for us, over to you Louise.
Thank you Chairman, just draw members' attention to page five of your agenda, as you can see from the item, there is very little change to when this was last presented to you, and the department are performing excellently both in relation to speed and quality of decisions. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Louise, so the main item for consideration tonight is the application for planning permission, reference NMA 2018 0114, land at East Street Farnham, and Ruth is going to introduce this application.
Thank you Chair. This application is the amendment to condition five of planning permission reference number 2018 A544, restricting works on the main East Street redevelopment permission from commencing until the dual lane bridge is constructed to allow the demolition of Brightwell Cottage in advance of the bridge's construction at land at East Street Farnham. First side is the site location and master plan, this is a non-material amendment application which relates to the East Street redevelopment site. The image on the left shows the East Street redevelopment site in blue, and the application site relating to the construction access bridge is shown in red. On the right hand side is the master plan for the East Street redevelopment scheme, which was granted approval in 2012 and subsequently in 2006 with some minor material amendments. One of the terms of the planning permission for this site was the provision of a temporary construction access bridge directly from the A31 over the River Way into the site. This was to ensure that the construction of the East Street redevelopment scheme did not cause unacceptable levels of congestion in Farnham Town Centre as a result of construction traffic being routed through it. Planning permission was duly granted for a dual lane construction access bridge earlier this year, ref number 2018 A544. Condition five of this permission requires the bridge to be constructed prior to any works or demolition taking place on the main redevelopment site. This is to ensure that there is no need for lorries to be rerouted through the town. The applicants are seeking a non-material amendment to change the wording of condition five to enable the demolition of Brightwell Cottage prior to the completion of the bridge. Councillors should note that this is not a planning application, this is an application for a non-material amendment. In deciding whether a change is material, a local planning authority must have regard to the effect of the change, together with any previous non-material changes on the planning permission as originally granted. Therefore, the planning merits of the proposed amendments are not before the council, the focus is whether the proposed amendments are material or not. The reason for this non-material amendment application is to regularise the existing situation. Councillors may recall that a non-material amendment application to revise the phasing plans relating to the main permission was approved by this JPC on the 30th of July 2018, following the approval of the dual lane bridge permission. These phasing plans show the demolition of Brightwell Cottage in advance of the completion of the bridge. Should these phasing plans be implemented, it would not be possible to build the bridge without being in breach of condition five of the bridge permission. So if I turn now to determining issues, the only consideration for this application is whether proposed changes to the wording of condition five to enable the demolition of Brightwell Cottage prior to the bridge comprise a non-material amendment. The principle of the demolition of Brightwell Cottage has already been agreed under the main scheme, and also its timing in advance of the completion of the bridge under NMA 2018 049, which was the phasing plan, minor material amendment application I've already referred to. All the information with regard to traffic impacts arising from demolition of the cottage in advance of the bridge was considered at the time of the phasing plan NMA. This proposal was considered acceptable and non-material. Officers of the view that there is nothing to suggest a different approach should be taken here. I note that there are concerns regarding the presence of maternity roosts in Brightwell Cottage and whether this is adequately mitigated for. It should be noted that Brightwell Cottage can be demolished as part of the existing permissions on the site. The principle of the demolition of this building is therefore not a matter for consideration by the committee. Likewise, the timing of the demolition of the cottage in advance of the bridge has also been agreed under the phasing plan NMA. This application purely seeks to regularise the situation and ensure that the bridge permission can be implemented without breaching this condition. Whilst bats are not worth consideration in determination of this application, due to the level of concern surrounding this issue, I do intend to cover this subject. As members may well be aware, a number of various types of bat surveys have been undertaken at the site between 2012 and 2018. The most recent survey was carried out on the 20th of September 2018. None of these surveys have identified the presence of maternity roosts. The only roosts identified have been day roosts, and a bat licence has been issued by Natural England on this basis. The 2014 Scott Brown Report does refer to maternity roosts, but none of the surveys that it relies on to draw its conclusions find evidence of maternity roosts. Whilst the roof voids could provide the potential for maternity roosts, there is no evidence that they are in existence. Furthermore, should maternity roosts be discovered during demolition works, the bat boxes on bat poles that have been approved on the site under a previous planning permission would provide appropriate maternity roosts for the type of bat species that are found to be present on the site. Just to add further reassurance, should maternity roosts be found, during demolition all demolition work would have to cease and further ecology work undertaken to identify the species of bats present. If it is a species for which bat boxes are not appropriate, alternative suitable mitigation measures would be required, that would need to be agreed with Natural England, a new licence would need to be issued, and development could not recommence until these mitigation measures are put in place. On this basis, officers are satisfied that the development would not cause any harm to bats. So if the reasons outlined above, officers with view that the amended wording of condition to five is non-material, and that this non-material application should be granted. I just would like you to draw your attention to the fact that there is a written update sheet. I also have a verbal update, and if I can just take you to page 25, it's quite a small but quite a crucial change in terms of the proposed wording of the condition. So if I can take you down to the reworded condition five on page 25, and start with the words halfway down that say shall begin before the South Street and A31 accesses the bridge, and after the word bridge there should be a comma, so you go the bridge, access road and site compound, so there just needs to be a comma inserted into that condition which was on the original condition. And I now like to hand over to Louise, who has a further verbal update for you.
Thank you Beth. This is a revised recommendation that you can see on your screen up here, and this is in response to a query that councillor Hyman raised this morning. So for a bit of background, section 96A of the Town and Country Planning Act is the section which allows non-material amendments to take place. One of the requirements of the legislation is that non-material amendments can only be submitted by people with an interest in all or part of the land to which the planning permission relates. Now on the application form submitted with the application, Crest have declared that they do have an interest in the land, but it has been raised to us that they may not have an interest in the land. Unfortunately, since this was raised with us, we have not had the opportunity to explore this further and to determine for definite whether Crest have that legal interest in the land that they are required. As a result, the officers therefore propose that the recommendation is amended to what is up on the screen in front of you, and that is that recommendation A, that's subject to the applicants demonstrating that they do have an interest in the land, and subject to amended condition five, which Ruth took you through earlier, and that the non-material amendment be approved, and recommendation B, that in the event that the applicants do not demonstrate that they have an interest in the land, permission be refused for the following reason. The applicants have not demonstrated that they, sorry, that should say, that they do have an interest in the land as required by section 96A of the Town and Country Planning Act, and the reason for this revised recommendation is to really give us the opportunity to be absolutely certain that Crest do have an interest in the land to ensure that we are making a lawful decision. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Louise. Members. Councillor James.
Thank you Chairman. I would just like to ensure that on page 21, the paragraph that says the applicant has confirmed, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth paragraph, it says that the demolition material, which is in the second line, would be stockpiled. And then in the next paragraph, it's obviously about the highways, and that there would be no harm to highway safety, and it's acceptable, but presumably if it's going to be stockpiled, there would be no extra vehicles moving anywhere, but it doesn't say that in the conditions. Because all it's saying is that we're now going to say that they could remove Brightwell Cottage before the bridge, but it doesn't say that they can't then take the stuff off the site, i.e. through Farnham Town Centre. That's my concern, because they have said if it's going to be stockpiled, but it doesn't tell us, so perhaps in the amended one, in the brackets, where it says other than the demolition of Brightwell Cottage, where no materials should be removed from the site, then it carries on. Thank you Chairman.
Ruth or Louise would you like to answer that?
Yes, we agree that that could be added if members would want to make that amendment to that condition.
I think it would tidy things up, wouldn't it? Councillor Gray.
Just a couple of questions Chairman, did the NMA that changed the phasing come before this committee or was it delegated? And yes, it's a delightful recommendation, but I do hate things that are open-ended, perhaps we could have an end date on it.
Thank you. Ruth?
Just to answer your first question, yes it did come to this JP, the phasing plans were discussed at JPC on the 30th of July, and in terms of your answer to the second Yes, we agree then, an end date could be inserted into the recommendation, and we would say that in the event the applications do not demonstrate that they have an interest in the land, within three months of the date of resolution.
Thank you Chair, just to quickly just check, I know I was here when we reviewed the phasing plans, did we have the requisite interest lodged for that non-material amendment, just to confirm that while I'm at it? And also, could you just explain to me what the consequences are of them not having it? What do they actually need to do to demonstrate their interest, other than the fact that they're clearly the developer, which to a relative newbie like me, seems like they've got quite a lot of interest in it as a result.
Lewis, would you like to take that one?
Thank you Chairman. We are satisfied that the previous non-material amendment application related to the entire site, rather than this smaller site that we're looking at today, and we are satisfied that they have an interest in, a leasehold interest in parts of the larger scheme. So on that basis, yes, we are satisfied that they have the requisite interest for that application. In terms of what they need to provide us with, they need to satisfy us that they have a legal interest. That can be anything from a freehold, leasehold, a commercial option agreement, maybe even an equitable interest in the land as well, so there is something that they need to provide us with to demonstrate that, which we will work on obviously within the three months.
Just a very brief follow-up, if we have this sort of application where clearly the phasing plans required us to change the conditions, is there any reason why those two things weren't done together as opposed to two non-material amendments, when the second one was clearly implied by the passing of the first one?
Yeah, if I can just answer that, it was effectively under two separate permissions, so the phasing plan was under the main redevelopment permission, and this condition is attached to the bridge permission, hence why they can't come forward.
It's still good. I mean, they asked enough questions.
Essentially, the bridge permission was granted before the phasing plan, NMA, came to committee, so we had to put the condition five on to reserve our position.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you Chairman. Really, I suppose there are a couple of ultimate questions which we need to get to, in terms of can we grant this, because it would be granting and implementing consent to the EIA development, is that a non-material amendment? And I think it's blindingly obvious to everyone, doing something which allows a scheme to come forward without EIA and commence work is not lawful, that's been established. And we do need to have a complete EIA, and certainly in respect of the idea that bats were not found in any of the surveys, well, the surveys are all secret, we've got to have those documents in the environmental statement, and there's nothing about the bat issues in the environmental statement. So to say to us that there isn't any evidence, well, show us the surveys, I've been asking for these for some time, and they haven't been put in front of us. Page 20 of the officer report advises us, I'll paraphrase slightly, that the key question's whether the demolition of the cottage would result in unacceptable levels of congestion within the town centre. Of course, the answer to that also is that we cannot know, because the consequences still haven't been assessed. The officer's response in that respect to public question to my Environment, Environment and Scrutiny Committee a year ago, stated that the outstanding modelling of the Royal Deer Junction will be conducted after the scheme has been implemented, and of course that's simply not good enough. Of course, you know, that's the sort of thing which causes problems with the start on the work on the bypass this week. Without the modelling and assessment, how on earth can we answer the officer's key question, I suppose is what we should ask, and we know the answer, we can't. The second point also of relevance is the recent discharge of land levels condition for the Brightwells proposals, which members may not know about, which I've been asking for 10 years, for those details of the scheme where the land level clashed with the leisure centre, there's two metres problem, and they're now proposing retaining walls and all sorts, and it's ridiculous, but the new design raises land levels in flood zone three, it requires a planning application with flood compensation updated, flood risk assessment and environmental statement, and as far as I'm concerned, we do all of it together, we have the stuff put in front of us, and then we can grant consent knowing what the likely consequences of our decision are. So on that point, I'd like officers to simply confirm that further applications are expected in respect to the Brightwells development, so we shouldn't be commencing. The other issue of course is that we're being told that the Seiridge and other utility diversions are not part of the scheme, and this is an issue of, that they supposedly can be done under GDPO. That was something which was done in 2015, when a screening opinion was written by the officers, which went completely counter to the Secretary of State's screening direction of 2014, which set the principle for the East Street EIA project, you can't just hive bits off out of the EIA because the applicant's refusing to do any further EIA work. So, and this most important question, what authority do we have, or do we have authority as officers and as members to override that principle? Because as far as I'm concerned, this application makes no difference, they will not be able to knock down the cottage until they have got a complete EIA, and also the outstanding conditions precedent to 49 and 50 of O268 need to be discharged. So that's fairly simple matter. In summary, I think the problems that I see with this is the recommendation is not what Crest applied for, it seeks an implementing consent for a £120 million EIA project without assessments, it can't be non-material. As I said, it appears Crest have no ownership or interest in the land, and actually I don't think leasehold counts under the Land Act, I think this refers back to the Land Act for the definition of interest, 1972 Act.
Shall we give the officers an opportunity to answer your queries councillor Hyman? Because you've had well over your four minutes, I'm sure they're all bursting to address your queries.
Thanks, I've got another 15 seconds, could I wind up after that then, or should I? Sorry, three more points, which will take a few more seconds, but if the officers wish to respond.
Thank you Chairman. This is a non-material amendment application to the dual lane bridge, members will probably recall from the committee earlier this year, that that development was not EIA development, it did not require an environmental statement with it. This application is obviously to make a small amendment to that permission. We have looked at it in relation to the wider scheme as we are required to do so, and we are satisfied that the small change would not result in the need for an environmental statement, and would not result in EIA development. As members themselves concluded as well, when they approved the phasing plan, which did approve the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage, and in doing so, the council has issued a decision that they do not consider this to be EIA. Most of the questions did relate back to that EIA query, and yeah, so that answers most of the points that councillor Hyman have made. In relation to the query, that the recommendation is not what the applicant applied for, the applicants submitted some suggested wording for condition five, which also included the demolition of the tennis pavilion and the provision of welfare facilities. During the course of our consideration of the NMA, we have determined with the applicants that those bits aren't necessary to be in the condition, the reason being is the tennis courts have already been demolished under a different permission, and in relation to a condition on the single lane bridge, of course, as such, it's no longer necessary to refer to them in this application that was granted this year, they are no longer there. As you are aware from your role as planning committee members, you cannot attach conditions that are not necessary. So thank you Chairman.
Councillor Hyman, do you wish to come back briefly please?
Well, yes, I mean, the idea, my question was, do we actually have the right to change the wording? I know that Louise says that this was suggested wording by the applicant, but it wasn't, that was their application. Their application tells us what the wording is that they want, and so my question wasn't what I got the answer to, it was, do we have the right to do it? And similarly, as Louise said, this committee has decided, or officers have decided, and the committee have granted consents, on the basis that EIA can be removed from parts of the site, certain parts of the site don't need to have EIA, and that's contrary to the principle established by the Secretary of State's screening direction. And my question was, do we have the authority? And those are yes/no questions, we either do or we don't. Do we have the authority to override the Secretary of State's decision and decide that we don't need to have a complete environmental statement when we're granting consent? Because all that is doing is frustrating the purpose of the law, it's blindingly obvious Chairman, if we just decide, oh, we're not doing that, we don't want to.
Thank you. Louise?
Yes, we do have the authority, because it is a requirement for us to look at any application that comes in in relation to this project, and make an assessment of the environmental impacts of this particular, the particular consequences of the application that we are assessing, and determine whether that particular application requires EIA. So we absolutely do have the authority. In relation to the recommendation for condition five, the amending wording was agreed with the applicants. So the answer is no, you can't just, you know, propose to completely reword a condition not in consultation with the applicants, but small changes can be made, and in addition, the amendments that went forward in the recommendation were fully agreed with the applicants. And, sorry, Ruth had pointed out as well that I had failed to answer one of your other queries, which was in relation to the bat surveys. I appreciate you may not have seen these, but these were distributed today. The two 2012 surveys were relevant applications for the 2012 bridge permission, so they had already been taken into consideration when the 2012 bridge permission was granted, and then a further update was provided from the agents in relation to this specific application. Because of the ongoing concern that has been raised by members, they had gone out, as pointed out by Ruth, and done a further survey, so that was also distributed as well. And thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
Just a quick query on those surveys that were sent around this morning. I was reading them through, and if I've missed this, I apologise, I couldn't see anything beyond 2015, and most of the documents were dated 2012, and most of the survey lines in them said 2012 and 2013, I couldn't see anything beyond 2015 in those surveys.
There is a new survey that was carried out just a week or so ago that is on the website as part of the application documents, and it's referred to in the report as well, 20th of September 2018, yep. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you Chairman, just a small query, what's the timescale for the erection of the bat poles and then the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage, please? Thank you.
There's no specific condition on the bat pole application that sets a time limit for when the bat poles have to be erected, but under the terms of the original planning permission for the main redevelopment site, there were mitigation measures contained within that report that would have to be undertaken prior to the commencement of redevelopment work on the site, and therefore the erection of the bat poles would be captured within that.
Councillor Ward.
Just a point, it just occurred to me just listening to the conversation, we are allowing the early demolition of Brightwell's Cottage as a variation of the permission given to make the bridge, as I understand it. Am I correct in assuming therefore that the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage was not in the main application, and this just popped in with the bridge? Because what I heard confused me slightly.
Louise?
Thank you. No, the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage was permitted by the main permission, it's part of the wider redevelopment scheme, it is that permission that allows the redevelopment of the cottage. On the bridge permission however, there was a restrictive condition placed to say that the bridge must be put in place prior to any of that works taking place on the main permission, and by default that would include the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage. So effectively, the committee have already approved the demolition of Brightwell's Cottage, and they've already approved it in advance of the bridge, because as you saw a couple of months ago, in the phasing plan, the cottage was due to come down before the bridge permission. This is in effect just tidying up, making sure that this permission matches what the committee have already found to be acceptable, to ensure that as developers, they are not in breach of condition. Developers do not, you know, most of the time, do not want to be in breach of conditions going forward, you know, then the local authority have to investigate. So it really is just a tidy in up exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are you happy for me to move to the recommendation? Councillor Hyman.
Thank you. Well Chairman, I was going to say that because there are further conditions precedent required discharge, and so that's got to come before us, we don't- required discharge, and so that's got to come before us, we don't have the evidence, I mean, this survey here, it certainly doesn't get around the, what we know are complete errors in the surveys that have already been published. And so I was going to propose that we defer for lack of the necessary bat traffic air quality and other assessments in the environmental statement, they're not there, and I would like to put that to the chamber, obviously, before we go to the vote, because this has to come back. I don't see there's any advantage in granting consent to it tonight without knowing, we certainly can't answer the key question that the officers have put in there on page 20, because we, you know, there is no proper assessment of traffic impact, and in that situation, how can we grant consent if we can't answer the key question, Chairman?
Okay, so you'd like to propose a deferral, yes. Do you have a second, or?
No, can I just go and ask a question before we move on, if that's all right?
councillor Hyman's made a proposal, I need a second. Do I have a second? No, okay. Follows.
Just to go back on this, I get that councillor Hyman has some issues, and I would quite like some clarity, because I haven't been around as long as everybody else here, and I know you've been discussing this application for many, 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 many years. Can I just ask, when we're looking about these air quality surveys and all these other things, which councillor Hyman alleges are missing, can you just elaborate for me, so I understand once and for all, why we don't have these, and actually, is it important that we have them before we continue to make any decisions on the subject? I know we might take a little bit longer in this session to do an otherwise relatively straightforward non-material amendment, but just, so I understand going forward. Thank you.
Louise?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, the query is in relation to the main permission, which is obviously not what we're discussing today, but the main permission was subject to EIA, it had a large amount of environmental information submitted with it. When that permission was originally granted, first in 2008, and again in 2012, a full assessment of all the documents was made at that time, and the development was found to be acceptable, the council issued an approval, that approval still stands, because it has been implemented. This isn't the opportunity to go back and revisit decisions, the council were satisfied at that time, are still satisfied that the decisions that were made were lawful, and this, what we're discussing this evening, is really a small amendment to a bridge application, and those air quality impacts have already been found to be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. I did wave my glasses frantically at the vice-chairman, but he insisted on looking away. Yes, I just really, I mean, I don't really know why I'm here tonight, to be perfectly honest. I drove here thinking, this is a waste of time, and it's a waste of money. We have got in our town at the moment what is going to be the start of four years of chaos, not all due to East Street, we've got Woolmead and everything else. When you do any application, there are amendments. I remember Michael Blower telling me this when I was first a councillor, when you start on a project, you discover that certain things need changing, and you come back in for NMAs. This is such a small amendment, and we saw when we were on the site visit, the position, the exact position of the cottage, and how it would impede what we're trying to do, which is to get this project done and dusted. Regardless of where you stand on it, whether you love it, whether you hate it, it's happening, and the whole of the town, on that side of the town, is boarded up, hoarded up, I suppose I should say, and we are waiting for progress. It is really not in anybody's interest for us to keep slowing down this process. We have been through permission after permission, we've had a range of views on it, we've never all been in agreement, but we are where we are now with a project that has actually started. We are going to have even more chaos from tomorrow onwards, when the bridge starts, and the last thing we want is anything to prolong this process. For the residents of Farnham, please, can I ask people to just understand the consequences of their actions? We have got a long, long period of difficulty. We joke in Farnham, and the best thing to do is go away for four years and then come back, you know. We are trying to make the best of it, we are trying to smile our way through it, but you have to accept it, it's a huge project, and it's going to have an effect. But I really think, I'm getting a little bit angry now with attempts to slow this project down, because I don't think that's helping anybody in the town, whether or not you hate the project, whether you love it. I really do think we've got to support getting this project delivered, and then we can at least move on as a town and get back to a normal way of life. So, sorry to have a little rant, but it's just getting silly, I think, at the moment.
Thank you.
Point to personal explanation, if I may, Chairman, this has taken over 20 years already since this came in front of wavelength, because of the way it's done, and because we are not assessing the consequences when the decisions are being made. And again, we're being urged to ignore, you know, that there are consequences to the decisions we make in our actions. The whole point of the EIA legislation is to ensure that we know the consequences of our decision in advance, before we allow demolition, construction to commence, before we make any decisions. And I'm just asking that we obey the law, there isn't a complete environmental statement, this is an implementing decision, it's a very important decision, Chairman, and if people don't understand that, I think perhaps we need to get some training in here.
No need to be rude, councillor Hyman. Elizabeth, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Chairman. At the risk of prolonging what's already been quite an extensive debate for a non-material issue, members, I thought I'd better just respond to that point. You've heard me many times over the years, seek to reassure you that we have assessed the proposals coming forward on this site thoroughly, and as far as I'm concerned, in conjunction with our lawyers, in full accordance with the law, we're very attentive to detail, we're aware of the scrutiny on all proposals coming before us, but particularly this one. And I, as I would say in any other proposal that's come before, I'm satisfied that we're giving you accurate advice across all criteria, including this one, and I hope you feel reassured by that and are positioned to now address the recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to the revised recommendation, and firstly, Recommendation A, that subject to the applicants demonstrating that they do have an interest in the land, and subject to amended Condition Five, the non-material amendment application be approved. Can I have all those in favour of that recommendation, please? With the time limit of three months, and no demolition materials to be removed across the bridge. All those in favour, please? And against.
And one against.
And moving on to Recommendation B, that in the event that the applicants do not demonstrate that they have an interest in the land, permission be refused for the following reason. One, the applicants have not demonstrated that they have, that they do have an interest in the land as required by Section 96A of the Town and Country Planning Act. All those in favour of Recommendation B?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Just before we move on to discuss Arran's Hill, could I just make a plea that if you have questions relating to the applications, especially very technical questions, please can you try and get them in good time? Questions arriving this morning aren't really fair to the officers, if they could have sort of three or even four days. You've had the reports since the weekend, it would be quite nice to get the questions in a bit sooner, and I'm sure it would give the officers a chance to give you a more full answer. councillor Gray.
Could I make an equal request to officers not to put reams of paper out on the last day before the meeting as well, please? It's very difficult for us to assess that sort of information.
Well, we only had a single page of update, printed update, the reams that came out were due to a request that arrived this morning, councillor Gray, I think you find.
We still have to read them, Mr Chairman.
Yes, Mr Chairman, could I recommend or ask a question? Could we have a deadline of 48 hours or 24 hours? After that, the officers are not bound to answer the questions. Last minute, when they come, we can't even read it ourselves and keep up with it.
The worry is, then, that the committee, these committee meetings get bogged down with answering technical questions, which is what I'm trying to avoid. People could still ask the question within the chamber, and then the officers have no chance to mug up on it. Yes, sorry, yes, I forgot. Declare this meeting closed. Thank you very much.
If I could just point out to everybody that before the Arran's Hill briefing, there is actually a model over there, so if members are interested in looking at the model, that is in relation to the Arran's Hill briefing.